City of Littleton, City Council meeting for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019. City Clerk, if we have a roll call.
Mayor Valdez?
Present.
Mayor Protan Malin?
Present.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Here.
Councilmember Elrod?
Here.
Councilmember Fay?
Here.
Councilmember Grove?
Here.
Councilmember Milliman?
Here.
Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You're not much better. Cool, alright, thank you. Alright, it's time for a citizen's appearance. Tonight, we do have Legit Lego Lions, who I understand they took first place. And so have Chris Penperline, am I pronouncing that right? Thank you.
I guess, ladies and gentlemen, these are my Legit Lego Lions. They are an engineering team at my school.
Start over. If you can, give your name and start over.
Okay. Chris Penperline. I'm a civil engineer with the Bureau of Reclamation. I coach an engineering team of these six young gentlemen over here. We've been together for four years. They compete every year in a themed engineering and science and technology competition. We recently competed in qualifiers and they won top honors there. And part of their challenge every year is to develop a solution to a problem based on their theme. Their theme this year was city shaper. And so, they were asked to identify a place to improve. And they chose downtown Littleton as their place. And they used some design guidance and came up with an innovative idea for you guys to consider maybe for the future of downtown Littleton.
Alright.
So, I'm gonna invite them up. They wanted to shake your hands, but it looks might be kinda tall.
We have time.
Alright, so we are the Legit Lego Lions. And we chose downtown Littleton as a public place we wanted to help improve. We learned from that the two main streets in downtown Littleton are going to be replaced soon due to water line replacement. So, this was a good time to redesign roads for the future.
To help learn ways to improve downtown Littleton, we reviewed resident and business surveys. Some of the key points from the reports were the most frequently selected concern facing the community was traffic. Reducing traffic congestion was selected as the most important future project. And parking downtown was a concern for many residents. And downtown parking was the lowest rated city services. And most business owners felt lack of parking was a challenge for them.
We used the 2018 City of Littleton Residential and Business Survey to help identify our problem. We also collected engineering drawings from City of Littleton. We intended envision Littleton where we met Peter K. Agamo. We talked with the former mayor of Littleton and city council. We took a field trip to downtown Littleton and Fort Collins. We read the RTD report about their autonomous shuttle vehicle demonstration project. We also read the Urban Street Design Guide. Lastly, we read a newspaper article about the importance for bike safety.
Solution. Our design addresses the concerns of the residents and business owners and prepares downtown Littleton for the future. Over the next century, Littleton's growing population will need streets that safely function as transportation paths and public gathering spots. Our design will improve mobility in downtown Littleton by adding designated bike lanes, improving the alley through downtown Littleton, making it an inviting and multifunctional corridor, and adding more parking near downtown Littleton. We estimate this project will cost around $17 million.
Beautification. Our design improves the alleyways with pavers, lighting, planters, bike racks, local outdoor art, and dumpster shrouds. This will make the alley into an inviting, multi-use corridor throughout the city. The alley can still be used for deliveries, employee access for businesses, and trash removal, will bring in an inviting and safe path for pedestrians. We want to add parklets. Parklets are mini parks on platforms that replace parking spots. We think parklets with dog and bike themes would be fun for people. This is our love note to the city.
Street lane design. We wanted to add bike lanes to Main and Alamo Streets. We redesigned the lanes to fit a bike lane, buffer, two car lanes, and keep parallel parking. The buffer space could be streetscaped with planters or art. Narrower lane widths could provide adequate safety, reduce and reduce speeding, which reduces the number of crashes and how bad they are.
Adding remote parking near downtown Littleton will relieve parking concerns in an underused area. The additional parking will encourage more visitors, especially during city events, which improves businesses. This parking plan could encourage motorists to find convenient parking away from downtown, improving traffic congestion. People will spend less time driving around looking for spots. An autonomous shuttle can safely transport citygoers from the parking lot to downtown. This is a handicap-friendly and a safe alternative instead of constructing a pedestrian bridge. Autonomous shuttles are already being used and tested, including here in the Denver metro
Sharing. We shared our plan with two Littleton city planners and two traffic engineers. We learned that the city would like using different lots to add remote parking than we planned, but they loved the autonomous shuttle idea. We asked if we could remove the left parking lane on Main Street to make a bigger buffer. They liked that idea too. They said crab apple trees would be an awesome parklet theme.
And that's our presentation.
Oh, great. Chris, I had mentioned that they had won first place. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Oh, yeah, sure.
At the microphone, if you will. And the robot performance.
Yeah, so, they won first place by presenting, there's three main aspects to their challenge every year. They have core values, which is, you're seeing a demonstration there where they try to learn leadership skills, they have fun, they discover new skills, engineering challenges, and just become leaders of tomorrow. The next thing that they do is they design and build a robot. They know more about this robot than I do. They have a challenge course that they need to, let's see if I can figure out how to work this computer.
They might know how to use it better than you just saying.
Yeah, they do. I guarantee it. Every year, they get a challenge and you'll see it behind you or wherever you guys can see it. They have to program an autonomous vehicle to collect points on a board every year. This year, like I said, it was city shaper. And you're seeing a demonstration of it up on the board. They did great. I mean, they scored 400 points. I know that doesn't mean much to you, but the next closest score was 350, so they knocked it out of the park. But what really won them this top honors, what they call the Champions Award, is if you can do all aspects together, and that includes the core values, the robot that you're seeing now, and then their project. The judges thought their project was great. It showed great insight. They used a lot of references, many of them are you guys. And we met with the city planners and engineers and they got some feedback. Then they already working on changing their design. Next week, they compete at State in downtown Denver at CU Denver. They face another 72 teams in that pool. If they take top honors there, they get to compete nationally in Houston, which they did last year and was a lot of fun.
Excellent.
Yeah, I'm pretty proud of them.
Yes, alright. Good job. Thank you.
They did have some questions to ask you so they could get a little feedback if you guys have time.
Sure. Any questions, Council?
Alright, so we talked about our autonomous shuttle in our presentation. And would you guys be able, would be willing to like ride an autonomous shuttle?
What's the weight limit? Yes?
Yes.
Sounds amazing.
Sounds like it's a seven yeses. Good job. Thank you.
How would you fund an expensive project like this?
Go to your parents and ask them for lots of money.
So, we can refer to our finance director. Or to our city manager. But there's a couple of ways. So downtown has been talking about, the businesses downtown have been talking about putting together what's called a bid, a business improvement district. So that's to be able to have a specific tax essentially in downtown that goes back into investment in downtown. I love the idea of the pavers because you could sell commemorative pavers and make some money off of that. So, there's definitely a lot of different ways. I don't think you ever fund it with just one way.
What parklet themes do you guys have?
What question again?
Parklet themes do you guys have? Like, yeah. Me and Brady made up the dog and bike theme. We were wondering what park themes you guys had.
What do you have? You're a dog person too.
Yeah, dogs.
Dogs? Tell us more about it. I just don't know enough about it.
So, parklets are mini parks that fit in a parking spot, so. Bike. If you look on our poster, it has side buffers, it has some attraction in the parklet to bring attention to it. And they're temporary or easy to move around, so.
That sounds good. Sounds good. I have the mic so we can hear you.
Okay, so we have another question. How would you feel about having the autonomous bus go to admin lots like ACC or the parking lot outside of here to transfer people to and from downtown Littleton and Main Street?
Counselor?
I think it's a great idea. Great idea. I've been advocating for a while, so I think that's a very smart way to move people around the city.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be your first rider.
And then, what do you guys think about traffic diets?
Love traffic diets. We all need diets of every form. Traffic is one of them. Especially after Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright.
Great job, guys. Well done.
One more question. Go ahead, you have one more question? Bring it on, bring it on.
What would the next step be for a project like this?
Working with our city staff, they can consider things and see, as the councilwoman had said, that financing these things are always tricky, but there are mechanisms that allow us to find some money. And if the city manager.
Yep. Mr. Mayor, if I might add, as the council's aware, we budgeted in the year 2020 to do some additional work in the downtown area. And so, we have a planning effort that'll probably launch, I'm guessing probably in the second quarter of next year. During our retreat, the 1st of February, we'll probably talk more about that and the opportunity. So quite honestly, a lot of the ideas that these young gentlemen are presenting will likely be raised by other residents and property owners in the downtown. So I would, as a fellow civil engineer, I welcome you to that conversation and kinda look forward to that.
Excellent.
Yeah, great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you again. And good luck. Alright.
Good evening, Council and citizens. I am pleased to introduce tonight the winners of the 2020 Littleton Calendar and Annual Report. This is the 40th year of the calendar, so yay. In September, the Littleton Fine Arts Committee judged 119 photographs submitted by 43 photographers. The winners include one for each month plus the cover. Each of the winners receives $25 and 10 calendars. The city charter requires publication of an annual report, and the Littleton calendar serves this purpose. The community has grown to love the calendar, and we print 15,000 copies of it, and they are free to citizens to pick up from city buildings or from each of the calendar sponsors. Those sponsors are Littleton Adventist Hospital, Arapahoe Community College, Hudson Gardens, West Room Welcome Week, PDA Road Gear, Littleton Public Schools Foundation, South Suburban Parks and Recreation, Bradford Autobody, Stu Maher Commonwealth Realty Services, Holly Ann Kenny Walker Remax Professionals, Lautenbach Insurance Agency, and Aspen Grove Lifestyle Center. So, I would like to call the names of the calendar winners and ask each of you to stand.
Excellent.
Joanne Weaver. Tim Canfield. Sorry, Tim Canfield. Roseanne Juergens. Pico Wooten. Jeff Keum. Victoria Natochi, I think she moved to the East Coast. Pat Dunahay. Penelope Todd. And last but not least, Rick Akers. Thank you to all of you for entering, and we hope to see you again next year. And there's plenty of calendars available by the front door if you didn't get one. Thank you, Council.
Alright. And thank you to all the calendar sponsors. That's awesome. Thank you very much. We're gonna move on into public comments, and do we have a roster of signup? Cool, and we'll give some folks time to move out. Good idea. Yes, thank you. Hey, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Good luck at State.
Yes. Need to come back and report to us.
Alright, thank you, guys. Alright, before we move on to public comments, if we could have approval of the agenda. Counsel, do we have any changes? No changes? Okay, so approved. Alright, now we can do public comments. Alright, first we have Kyle Murb.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm here on behalf of the Littleton Business Chamber speaking tonight. In regard to the property known as Norgren, it's a beautiful and it's a large piece of property that I hate to see it getting chopped up into parcels development. I don't know if there has been ever a study done or assigned by the city to see what the best use for that property is. I know it's not industrial now, and there is an application for the southern part of it to become residential. I really think it's a beautiful parcel land up there that we should have a master plan to see what's gonna be developed up there before we start chopping it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Dunahay. Next up will be, I think it's Paul Anderson, maybe?
Good evening. Pat Dunahay, 1600 West Mineral. In contrast to what Cal just talked about, I'm speaking more on South Park's side tonight. As you guys know, we have an industrial park there as well as we have retail. It's a complete mixed-use park, including residential. And I think that piece of grounds is a touch challenged myself. I'm not sure that powers there suggest retail. I'm not, I'm not sure what the best use is. I certainly don't wanna act like I do, but I don't think it's crazy to consider a nice condominium townhome type development there that would bring people into the city and hopefully they spend money at Cal's restaurants and bars, and you guys collect sales tax from it. So I think we can't just ignore what it is they're trying to accomplish. We have two residential components, as you guys are aware of, in South Park, and we've been able to make that work. My challenge to you all is the fairness of development. When we build something in South Park, the impact fees are substantial. I'm sure you guys are aware of what South Park has paid into impact fees over the last few years at some of our bigger, larger developments. And I just don't know what you charge, what latitude you have to charge these developers coming in in terms of impact fees. But if we give them a break versus what all of us out in South Park would pay, I'd feel like I'm not doing my job on behalf of South Park, bringing up, let's at least try to, you know, collect equal to what we pay, what they would pay. I think, I think it's easier for us than it is for you as a city in terms of design and concept that we can make them, make it look pretty, or we just tell them to go away. I think you guys really do have that same power, but I know it's more of a challenge for you. And I would ask that you guys be as strong towards that as you possibly can without bordering line and putting the city in any kind of legal jeopardy. We're certainly not in support of that, but pushing these developers back to say, hey, this is just not pretty enough. It doesn't have enough open space. It doesn't have enough setback. We have to start getting more serious as a community about this. We take it so serious out in South Park, and I just always tell everybody, don't forget about us and go drive around down there and look at the last 10 buildings that we built and see if you think we did our job or not, and ask you guys to do the same. Thanks.
Thank you, Pam. Was it Pam? I'm sorry, Pam. I said Paul, it is Pam. After that, Carol Breezak was on deck.
Now that you know, you'll be ready for all the next times. A couple of things. The legit Lego kids did a better job of rationale for their design than anything I saw in the comp plan or TMP process. And so that leads me into what I came here to tell you about, and that's what my charge is to you, the body of the Littleton City Council. You are not here to vote your values. You are here to vote our values. And to do that, you must present rationale and data, which you saw the kids do. None of that was shown, and I went to all of the comp plan meetings. I was there, I heard it all. And what I heard was opinions of individuals and self-indulgent, self-focused ideas. That is not your job. Your job is to represent us, you are public servants. So here's the difference between power and authority and your rights. You have power and authority, and you will vote. You have the right to make decisions on our behalf. And to make those decisions, rights come with responsibilities. And you have the responsibility to demand from staff adequate rationale. That has not been brought for the comp plan. It has not been brought for the Norgren property. You'll rarely hear me agree with Cal or Pat on development. The Norgren property is too many of the same thing on eight acres. It is not the character of Littleton that is against our comprehensive plan, old or new. It is not diverse. It does not provide housing for people who live in that neighborhood. Our District Two rep, who is now the Presider of Council, said, "It doesn't bother me if the people who live near there can't afford these. It should bother you." You represent all of us, not the people you think should come here and live, not the people they want to shop at Cal's restaurants. You represent all of us, the people who can't afford housing too. You must serve us all. That's your job. Right? You have the right to decide. You have the obligation to provide data to all of us, from staff, that is complete and thorough about describing the impacts on the city so we all understand what those impacts are, and we can give you what our opinions are. So Council, that's your charge from me. I think it's a public charge. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, Pam. All right, Carol Breezak. And then Sally Parsons, you're on deck.
Hi, my name is Carol Breezak, and I live in the Fourth District. All right, congratulations to the newly elected members of Council. I'm hoping for a council that's more responsive to citizens than the previous council. I'm hoping that when citizens come before Council and ask questions, that those questions will be answered. Seems to me that's the best that Council, or the least that Council can do. And with that in mind, I have a question for you tonight regarding our charter. This was a question I asked probably over a year ago and never did receive an answer. The charter states that the Council shall provide by ordinance fire services. I may not know exactly what it means when it says that Council shall provide for fire services. And while I may not know exactly what it means, I'm pretty sure I know what it does not mean. So my question to you is, how is Council providing for fire protection for the citizens of Littleton? On a different note, as someone who wants to see the small-town character of Littleton protected and preserved, again, I congratulate you, those that were elected. I think we now probably have a supermajority on Council of people who ran on that very item to protect and preserve our small-town character. It appears that it'll be very soon, and we'll get to see how that plays out. Will they be campaign promises, or were they campaign slogans? So I wish you all luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
And I hope to get an answer.
And Sally Parsons. Thank you, Carol. I think it just...
I am Sally Parsons. I live at 6777 South Ridge Lane, Littleton, Colorado. I welcome all the new councilmen. I have served in your place years ago. It's a great place to be. I have a complaint that I think can best be solved by Council, and that is waste disposal. I have lived in Littleton for over 60 years. We have had waste disposal by pro-disposal, who have recently been balled out by waste connections. Since they bought out, they have stopped by my house maybe three times since summer. I understand, yes, we have snow problem in the last two weeks. They have not picked up my trash in a month. Yesterday, my neighbor and I, who lived on Briarwood, I live on South Ridge, watched their truck come down my dead-end street, turn around, and go back up. They did not pick anyone's trash up. This has gone on for far too long. When I call, it takes 30 minutes to 40 minutes to reach someone on the phone. At that time, they say, "Well, how many bags of trash did you have out? How much did they weigh? What about, did the trash, did your branches taller than four feet? No." I said, "I am 85 years old. If I can get that trash bag to the curb, a team of waste connections people must be able to pick it up." So after yesterday's pass by, I felt that it is time to come to you again and ask you to please review a decision made by the Council some time ago. It was last summer or so, when you were, or the former Council was discussing whether or not the city should ask for a process where the trash pickup companies would come to you and offer an option of service. I live on a street with six houses, and yes, it's a cul-de-sac. Of those six houses, there are three trash pickup companies who drive down there, well, not mine, at least once a week. And of course, on recycle, that means there are two trucks of each company. My little street is deteriorating quite a bit from the asphalt and the use of these heavy trucks. They got down to the end of the cul-de-sac. I have a collection of cable from their chains that they put on their trucks to get back up the slope, the Ridge Road. I know that's a problem on that slope because, pardon me?
I think your time has expired.
Yes. Anyway, I am asking you to please review the previous Council's concern about having a
Thank you, Sally.
A number of trucks on our mall streets.
Thank you. What year were you on Council, by the way?
Pardon me?
What year were you on Council?
Okay. That was in 1970s.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
I was the first woman mayor.
Oh, excellent.
Thank you.
That's good to know. Thank you very much. All right, she was the last sign up. Do we have any others that would like to come down and speak? Unless, is Paul coming down? All right, cool. All right, that'll do that for public comments. City Manager and City Attorney, do you have any comments that you would like to add at this time?
Mr. Mayor, just maybe a couple of comments here. I think just a clarification, the action tonight on the Council's consent calendar regarding the amendment to a plan development, what the Council's action here this evening is really just setting a hearing, a public hearing in two weeks. And so that's when the public discussion will take place for that particular item. I'm sure the City Attorney here will respond to the question about the charter on fire. And just one question or comment on the waste disposal issue mentioned here by Ms. Parsons. I know that a few of you of Council have kind of shared with me some concerns regarding solid waste and recycling. And my suggestion is that during the retreat here, roughly the first of February, is an opportunity to kind of talk about all the priorities that the Council may wish to consider here in the coming years. Not only have I had a considerable amount of utility experience and specifically solid waste, we probably have one of the best representatives in the state as our Public Works Director on the issue of solid waste, maybe even nationally. So I know that we're willing to have that kind of conversation. Just know upfront, it is a pretty significant heavy lift for any city to kind of take on the solid waste issue, based on my experience. But again, the retreat is probably the best opportunity.
And City Attorney?
Yeah, I guess, too. To piggyback on what Mr. Ralph said in regard to the Norgren comments that you heard today, City Council will have a specific list of criteria that the application will need to meet in order for that property to be rezoned. And that'll be the criteria that this City Council relies upon. So there may be some other things that may be nice to consider, but not legally sufficient to justify either passing or denying based upon things that are not within that criteria. In regard to Ms. Breezak's comments regarding the city's charter, there are a number of things within the city charter that probably need to be cleaned up, especially as it relates to South Metro Fire taking over in regard to that. I will say there are some language within that actual provision of the city charter. That's Section 104 of the city charter that talks about, "Council, for as long as it deems necessary, will provide for the formation and operation of a volunteer fire department." That's obviously not been something that the city has done. So there's some antiquated items within our own city charter.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to consent agenda items. Consent agenda items can be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion. Any consent agenda item may be removed at the request of a council member. Okay, 6A, Ordinance 30-2019, an ordinance on first reading, Amending Ordinance Number 39, Series of 2018, known as the Annual Appropriations Bill for all municipal purposes of the City of Littleton, Counties of Arapahoe, Douglas, and Jefferson, State of Colorado, for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, ending December 31, 2019. Resolution 65-2019, Approving the Intergovernmental Agreement Between the City of Littleton and Board of County Commissioners, Arapahoe County, for sharing the cost of census coordinator in Arapahoe County. Ordinance Number 29-2019, An Ordinance on First Reading, Approving a Rezoning of Property From IP and IP PDO to PDR, Located at 241 West Powers Avenue, in Approving the Delaware and Powers General Plan Development.
Pull.
Resolution 60-2019, Approving an Amendment to the Agreement with Mall High Flood District to Design and Construct of Damage and Flood Control Improvements for South Platte River at Reynolds Landing. ID Number 20-318, Approval of Minutes for November 19, 2019. Okay, Council, I'm looking for a motion.
So most?
Second?
Second.
Great, we are voting on A, B, D, and E. So we can have your votes.
The vote is seven in favor, the motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we're going back to Ordinance Number 29-2019. Councilmember Fay, you pulled?
Yeah, I have a question for the City Attorney. You were talking a bit about when we have the public hearing on this, that we have to be careful about what we can and cannot consider. We haven't had an economic report since I've been on Council, anyway. And it was included in the packet. Does its inclusion mean that the content of that report is a matter that we can consider?
I haven't actually reviewed everything that's been provided. I believe one of the criteria, and it might actually be the first criteria that Council will be considering as it relates to approving a rezoning relates to, there's language in there relating to economical. So I believe that's the purpose for the inclusion of the economic analysis as it relates from going from PUDI to a PUDR and what that is. So that would be something that comes in for the consideration of City Council, in my opinion.
And so that was a yes, we can consider those factors.
Correct.
I'm not trying to give you grief, I'm trying to comprehend. Thank you.
I hear you there. All right, cool. Any other questions, Council? Oh, cool. I am looking for a motion.
Motion to approve Ordinance 29-219 on First Reading, Approving a Rezoning of Property From IP and IP PDO to PDR. Will that suffice?
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Council ready to vote?
The vote is seven in favor, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right. That takes us down to general business, of which we have none. We have no second readings tonight. Let's open it up to comments again. City Manager, do you have anything else to add?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of comments here I want to make on some subjects here. I left a hard copy, a print here for each council member. We have prepared here, our Public Works Director, Keith Reister, a after-action report on our recent kind of snow event. And I think I just want to share with you that, you know, the city has received, I'd say, a fair amount of comments from the public who are really dissatisfied with the level of service that our Public Works Department provided here during this recent storm event. And, you know, I think certainly the Council, who's been here a while, kind of appreciate the level of magnitude that it takes to kind of organize and provide a snow removal service. And quite honestly, over time, since certainly I've been here, the public support and comments about our snow removal have been very high. That's not to say that we can't learn from a past storm event. And there's all sorts of communication through the whole metro area just about the significance of the storm and kind of the challenge that it provided here for really most cities. And I think, again, I think I just want to provide an opportunity for the Council to see kind of this after-action report and just acknowledge publicly that, you know, we accept responsibility for this. This is one of our core services. And, you know, we're going to learn from that event, and hopefully we can provide a much better level of service the next time around. The other topic I want to share is an issue that has been raised here by a few of Council. I provided an email to all of you here this afternoon, and it had to do on one of the social media platforms of Nextdoor regarding some concern about a program here that we have within the city for small grant projects. It's actually kind of two levels, kind of what we call the small level, which is $500 maximum. And that's eligible for just anybody in the city here to provide, you know, block parties and things of that nature to kind of, in essence, bring the community together. And we've had a high degree of success, nearly 100 applications over the several years, you know, for that small grant program. know, for that small grant program. And quite honestly, in my, since my tenure here, I've personally received a lot of compliments. And thank you for the fact that we provide the small grant. I think in the social media platform there, there were some questions about specifically the large grant program. And recently, in kind of a South Park HOA area, there was a grant of about $9,500 that was granted for landscaping. And I think the question was raised about how appropriate that really is for a city of our size and whether or not there's other purposes. So I provided kind of the council a little bit of background on that. The total budget for this is about $60,000. We spent about $50,000 on that on the small grant side. And so the larger grants, we tend to have one or two a year, so we don't have many of those. But again, the intent's the same with a larger grant. It's intended here for communities to try to coordinate, to look for ways to kind of improve their community, and that's the purpose of this grant program.
When you said $60,000, that's the total budget?
Total budget.
That's not what went to...
Okay, that's the total budget. And again, the majority of that is really spent through the small program. So I think, again, it's a, the Nextdoor platform is real difficult for any city to respond because of the constraints on that. So we don't have the ability to respond to that. But I wanted to publicly share that information because I think some of it perhaps is just not informed. And I'd be more than willing to talk to anybody here, our citizens here, if they have questions about that. And lastly, you know, ultimately, this is a challenge for the council. When you put a budget together, it's trying to decide, you know, the best way to appropriate resources. And so if there is some questions about this, my suggestion is that we kind of raise this during the budget process here, kind of later this spring and summer. Forgive me my voice. I've been battling this cough thing for about six weeks and it's, I think I'm at the end, but I can tell my voice is about to go. So anyways, I just wanted to provide that background for council and be more than willing to discuss this with council and certainly with our public about it.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions regarding that grant? Because I know we all got emails on that. Okay, thank you, thank you. City attorney?
Nothing specifically, but I think I've spoken with quite a few of you to prepare yourself for some exciting legal memoranda as relates to various things for some of our new and older council members alike regarding ex parte communications, quasi-judicial, legislative, any number of exciting bedtime literature. That's all.
Thank you very much. All right, cool. All right, so now it is time for our council members, and we'll start with Councilmember Fay.
I'd like to give a quick report about the Highline Canal, more success. So back in September, council approved a resolution to support the canal plan. And that's the plan for what the canal will be and how it will become that. Again, the, it's a 135-year-old engineering project is what the, and it was quite a feat to be able to do it. And now it's being transitioned into a recreational area, 71 miles of park, really, with the cooperation of the individual jurisdictions, 71 of them altogether along the canal and Denver Water. So that, that's quite a coordination project, and it's being done by the Conservatory, Highline Canal Conservatory. One of the things that people are concerned about again and again is will there be water? And the answer is yes, there will be water more than 100 days a year once all of the structure is put into place. Primary source of water will be stormwater runoff, which up until now has not been legal to combine with canal water. But now it will be done that way. And that will provide water for the tree canopy, and that's the second thing that people are concerned about, both about the safety for hikers and for the well-being of the trees. Part of the long-term plan that Littleton is part of is that the trees have all been evaluated. Forty percent of them are cottonwoods, and they are nearing the end of their normal lifespan, being over 100 years old. So it's normal for a number of those trees to be dying out and to be removed. The fact that they're dying doesn't mean they don't have enough water. It means that their lifespan is ending. So the plan, one more thing on the plan is that for the canopy, the trees will be trimmed, starting at each end of the canal and moving inward, trimmed for safety. And that means there will still be dead trees there, in the ones that aren't in the way of, or that aren't likely to fall on people because there are 24,000 trees. And then those trees will be replaced with more drought-resistant type trees and native kinds of greenery so that we have a long-term, sustainable Highline Canal.
Excellent, excellent. Good report, thank you. Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes, I want to thank everybody that came out for the parade Friday night. It was really well-attended and most of us were in a wagon waving to everybody. So thank you for supporting city council and supporting downtown Littleton. Last night, I was sworn in as the representative from city council for South Metro Fire. So if you have any questions on the fire, I guess I would be the person to come and talk to. I'm just getting ramped up. And I want to remind people, Planet Fitness will be, have their ribbon cutting tomorrow afternoon, about 5:00. That Planet Fitness is over off of South Bellevue and, what's right behind the Taco Bell there? No, South Bellevue and...
The Planet Fitness?
Planet Fitness. I should have the address, I'm sorry. Right next to King Supers on South Bellevue. So that starts about 5:00 tomorrow if anybody wants to come down and check out Planet Fitness.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Elrod?
I have nothing to report, but I do want to extend thanks to Public Works Director and the snowplow crew because I did receive a call late that evening of concern of just snow removal. And I really appreciated the quick turnaround response so I can let the citizen know what was going on, what they can expect. So I do appreciate the level of communication and responsiveness to that. And so did the citizen, they responded back.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Milliman?
Hi, good evening. I would like to thank Kelly Nardi and her crew for organizing the Candlelight Walk on Friday. It was super fun, even though it was super cold. I think we all had a really good time, and I really, really appreciate that because I know it's, it's kind of an annual event for a lot of families in Littleton and even outside of Littleton. And I hope I can give a shout-out to downtown Littleton, and I will. They're going to be extending their hours this coming Saturday for holiday shopping. So get out there and support local small businesses. There's some really great shops down there, of course, and you can eat and dine or have a drink, coffee, whatever. So enjoy.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Grove?
No report tonight.
No report. All right, thank you. Just one quick item for me, from me, is for council, is that if you can, review the chart that the city manager and staff has put together. It's the chart that shows the schedule on when we have some big stuff to do. And the reason I ask you to review that is because as we get ready for our retreat, I want staff, or council, to start sending to the city manager, I think is where you want topics to go to. I would like council to start sending topics of, that we would like to address, but send them directly to the city manager. Do not send them to city council. Send them directly to you and the assistant city manager, perhaps, and Sama?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ultimately, those are the two who will probably deal with that. Yeah, so you can send your suggestions to me. Eventually, myself and the mayor here are going to be meeting with David Marvin, those of you who were at the retreat the last time, that was our facilitator. So he eventually, after we confirm here with the, with the mayor, will likely sit down with each of you independently and kind of talk about the potential and the, you know, kind of the agenda, possible agenda items for a retreat. And eventually, we'll come back to the mayor and we'll kind of organize a list here of what the agenda will be. So whatever you send me, plus your conversation with David Marvin, we'll aggregate that and hopefully have an agenda for you.
And could you send everybody a hard copy of the spreadsheet? Because it's on the computer, it's one thing, but it's different to look at it because it's rather lengthy.
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Cool, if you could do that, I appreciate it. That's all I have. Anything else?
What's the timeline that you want this information?
Well, we haven't came up with a date. I think we're looking at end of January is one of the dates.
Yeah, I think right now, Becky Fie, my executive assistant here, has been reaching out to you. We did a little doodle trying to figure out a date here. It's starting to look like it's going to be that 31st of January and the 1st of February is a Saturday. We'll confirm that here, but I think if your suggestions, really by the end of the year, I'd appreciate that. David Marvin's likely to sit down with you, you know, shortly thereafter the 1st to try to confirm all this.
And he does eventually sit down with all council members?
He does, one-on-one.
Great, all right, cool. Anything else? Cool, all right, we are adjourned.